Are these on?
That one is.
Are these on?
I can get rid of it, that one will be my.
What on? All right, we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting in order seven oh one P M. Coram is present, all members present except for Mr. Gail Jones. We'll stand and we'll have the pledge of allegiance and a prayer.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To your republic, which is kings, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Father God, thank you for allowing us to join tonight. Father, first and foremost, we thank you for sending us rain. Our rain was much needed and we sure need some more, just keep it coming. Father, we just ask that you be with each and every member here tonight, just keep us on task. Delivering city business, make the best decisions possible for the city of Bartlett. Father, just, we ask that you be with our friend Vina and just give her well. In your name we pray, amen. No one signed up for citizens communications? No, no on boards, commissions, committees? And consent agenda, the consent agenda. Item number one. We'll make, we'll read these and then we'll make one. Big motion to approve all three unless you want to pull one out to talk about what to pull it out. Item one, consideration possible action contract Eagle Eye Consulting and Construction LLC for a manhole replacement on Brook Street and Suratap on Brook Street and Stonepack Lane and the amount of thirty, amount of thirty-one thousand eight hundred twenty-seven dollars. Item two, consideration and possible action to approve an agreement and appropriation of ten thousand four hundred dollars for Funview for the mass meter exchange console. And item three, consideration and possible action to approve an annual appropriation of three thousand two hundred fifty dollars and a one-time appropriation of twenty-five hundred dollars to Funview for a software permit solution. So we need a, a motion or we could pull any out to talk about.
We have a question on that, on the, the ten thousand four hundred dollar for Funview. Did we know about that?
It's a new thing.
Guess what I thought because.
They, they just rolled it out like three weeks ago. It's now a requirement. As we, if we ever do any mass meter exchanges, they're requiring that because I guess of the software integration and support that they have to provide with the vendor, the city, and then themselves.
That's from the meter company or from Funview itself?
That's from Funview itself. I think it's a brand-new requirement that they just rolled out.
What do they call it, mass?
It's anything where you're intending to change out every or any, well, mass, I don't know what mass is for them, but for us, right? We're changing out all of the meters eventually to the A M I meter. And so that's where the mass comes in. So as we're doing these gradual changes, they have to have something set up where we can input and then remove because we're also gonna have to do from a book standpoint, you have to then change out the way that you're doing your reading and then also the processing on the automation side. So there's, it's complicated on the back end of what they, all they have to do to get this to be seamless eventually. So that's why I think they've now started to roll this out.
And then the thirty-two fifty is for a permit?
Three thousand two hundred fifty is for the permit solution. So it'd be the, to have Funview, to have their permit. So you know how we have accounting, budgeting, we've got utility billing, and we've got payroll? Now we would have a permit one as well, where to be able to track all of our permits.
What happened to the, my government online? Weren't you guys halfway through implementing that?
I'd never heard that they were implementing, did y'all ever execute a contract with my government online?
No.
I knew that it was in the works of discussing, but then because my, because we have Funview as a base for all of our financials, it was an easier way for, it doesn't have the applicant standpoint like my government online, which is nice to have, but then for the city with the financial side of it, it's the backend, it just talks to each other. And I had my government online in Georgetown. It's not a system that talks really well to any other system. So from a financial standpoint, it's pretty hard to track.
So let's just deal with all last thing we ever thank you and interface all that together to work.
And the track, yeah, and to start tracking permits outside of just an Excel.
Is that ten thousand an annual fee?
The ten thousand four hundred's a one-time.
Okay.
The other one on permitting, it is three thousand two hundred and fifty annually and then twenty-five hundred one-time to just get it all set up.
And the city has set up it's one user, not multiple users?
Yes. It's actually pretty cheap when you can, I've seen, I've seen far more expensive, but, yeah.
Do we have a, do y'all wanna pull any of these out to further discuss them or do we wanna approve the consent agenda as is?
Now, whether we're gonna be able to do any better with it, it may actually be done.
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda. Anything else?
As presented.
As presented.
Ms. Cooper made a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with a Mr. Jesse Ryan a second. All in favor? Does carry forward if you agree. All right, workshop agenda review, discuss and provide direction. Item number four, presentation and discussion on a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately zero point three two one four acres of land from B three general business district to C one commercial district for the property generally located at two four zero East Devilla Street, Bartlett, Texas, and Bell County, Texas.
And so for this one, we have the requestor, Ms. Becky Cooper. Did you have a presentation that you wanted to speak there?
I'm just gonna go over and address, yeah, what is in your package. Thanks for letting me speak, city, I appreciate it. City being mayor, city council, and city admin, I appreciate it, yeah. And I just kinda wanted to go over, I sent out an email with hitting some points in reference to a traffic study and then also the survey. First of all, did you have any open questions that I could answer or anything that you would like me to kind of hit on in reference to city council? Looking at me like you want me to say. Anyways, and so what we're discussing is in reference to moving it from a B three to which is a multi-use general business to a C one, which would be using this property for best use, highest and best use. And so biggest, the biggest thing we'd like to kind of focus on this evening, of course, we've got the different, the six different reasons. And like I said, we will go over the traffic study as well within one of these reasons. But the biggest thing is the safety piece, and I think the traffic studies alone show the challenges there with this property because of course this property is on the corner of ninety-five and two forty east Devilla, as you see on the survey. And with ninety-five, and as where you're aware, it's become kind of the bridge between Temple and Taylor or Bartlett or Granger, depending on where you're headed. But as we stood there and did the traffic study, we did focus on what types of business, commercial vehicles that were always with there, and they were mainly all from Temple. So we kind of created that term, the bridge, and for ninety-five. And so in reference to that, let's go over the, if you're okay with that, let's go over the traffic study first since we are talking about the safety situation. So we did two different samples. And the first sample we did at six o'clock in the evening, and we chose these specific to, obviously, and six P M, five P M, you know, we were giving time, since we're calling it the bridge, we were giving time for people to come from Austin and come from Taylor, those kinds of things, getting off of work at five. So sample A was conducted at six P M, like I said. The first count an hour was seven hundred and, excuse me, seven hundred and ninety-two cars per hour that passed that location. The second was seven hundred and fifty-six cars per hour with an average of seven hundred and seventy-four cars. The second one was the next day at eight A M, and we specifically chose that because we wanted to kind of get past the school hour, if you will, the school traffic per se. So the first sample was eight hundred and forty cars per hour. The second sample was eight hundred and eighty-eight cars per hour with an average of eight hundred and sixty-four cars. And just for kicks and grins, on Friday, it was a Friday evening, to be fair, and I think I shared this with you. And on Farm Market Road forty-seven and State Highway ninety-five, you also know that is where Clark and ninety-five intersect. And that was done at six o'clock as well, and it was, just for interest, it was one thousand six hundred and sixty-eight cars an hour. So with that stated, if we're gonna, number one, the safety piece, right? That's a lot of cars passing a property that could be currently used as a residential. And the way that it's marked currently, it can be used as a residential. So, so that's one of our conversations that we'd like for y'all to have. The second one is also best use is in reference to sales tax. We have properties that obviously have a lot of traffic that's been proven. So, you know, in reference to putting something there for highest and best use to raise sales taxes to the city of Bartlett, that would definitely justify that piece for that as well. And I know that, you know, you're really focused on development, and I feel like that, that that definitely supports that, that thought process. So the zoning, like I said, our legal, what we're asking for is our intent and request is to zone it from a B three multi-use to a C one commercial for highest investments. And we discussed the survey in reference of it being on ninety-five and East Devilla. And the survey sticks are up there right now, we'd like to go take a look at them. And it's backed up up to the library. And it definitely, more of it is facing ninety-five than facing Devilla. And then we talked about what that change of zoning could open up the doors. It basically makes any type of commercial option there for the most part, obviously, within the city governments. And so that would be financially beneficial to the city of Bartlett. Also use it to the maximum of its production, production ability. And then we talked about the traffic study and obviously it is definitely, the traffic is definitely there. And then the adaptiveness of it all. And so we all know that horses out of the barn, the horse's family is out of the barn for the next ten years. And the black round extension has already begun, and I actually linked that to the email that I sent you. And, and then of course we know that San Simeon Texas is just fifteen minutes down the road. But with that said, and then Ronald Reagan is about two minutes when it's completed from that property, as far as the extension goes. So, did anybody have any questions? I think I pretty much went over all the different reasons why it would be beneficial to the city, because that's why we're here. And then the safety piece in reference to having residential there is real concerning. But that type of high drop it.
So because this is just the workshop portion, this is kind of, if y'all wanted to ask any questions, y'all could. No action will be taken until we have the public hearing first, close it, and then it would be the regular agenda first item number six. So if y'all had any questions of the applicant, this would be a good time to ask them.
So in that lot, in particular that lot, what are y'all looking at trying to promote there?
Well, best use, of course, I mean, you know, in reference to, we've had several interests, you know, obviously I can only share so much of that with you. But with that stated, there's been interest from different companies as far as like restaurant businesses, auto businesses. And those have been too, and then we've, and then we had somebody that was interested in possibly doing a multi-family there. But again, we're kind of concerned with the traffic numbers, with that piece of it. And obviously, I mean, the climate decision, which women choose. But I think the whole idea of it is to use it, you know, choose, they would like to choose somebody that would benefit the city also in sales tax dollars, and currently in multi-use that would not, you know, we can put a chip flag there, for instance, probably.
And they'll be concerned that this is an openness, opening us up for a big count of warrants here for some of these descriptions?
What, what do you mean?
The C one use.
Yeah, because I know that, you know, the board has been approached by a couple of people that wanted to do the dismantling of cars, so to speak, and create a park yard right in the middle of town. I don't know that that would be a desirable situation.
Right.
You know, and we, something like this. I'm having a fear that they're just gonna open that whole corridor up for us to have, be at a constant battle to try to manage what our main corridor in town looks like.
Right, well, interesting, okay. And I do agree with you, my clients agree with you. And, you know, their goal is not to have an industrial auto car store, they're to work on car situation there.
Well, but I mean.
They've already defined that one.
That changes everything.
Right, right, well, it does, but at the end of the day, well, it does, that's actually could be done now. So you.
Yeah, but you can't dismantle.
You can't dismantle.
You can't do your stuff essentially.
Right, right, no, that's not what, their, their references is to open it up for retail space, restaurants, that kind of thing.
And a B three, I think, would all be common like that.
Not a chip flag.
I'll double check.
Should cover restaurants. Have you got a copy of this, Miss Cooper? The, the list, so it's talking about, so he's talking about now C one. If we, if we zoned it for C one, then that opens up to like acid manufacturing, cement, lime.
Yeah, I mean.
Explosive manufacturing, fertilizer manufacturing, gas, gas, I mean, obviously, it's not a very big lot, so a lot of this stuff's not gonna be built there, but.
I guess my concern with that would be that, so we had that problem already with Steve Focker, I called him. And he wasn't aware that they were dropping junk vehicles in front of the thing as we come into Bartlett. And so he immediately took care of it, and he was told that he was approved, no problem to build that right there and that that wouldn't be an issue at all, but he would remove those, I spoke with him. And he would, he would remove those because he didn't realize that they were sitting there in daylight and that he went back and actually reverted it in reference to, I, I fully respect him. Yeah, the new industrial thing, and it's the first thing you see as you come into town. And so he actually went on his own and created a, well, within his own commercial property that stated that only a certain amount of vehicles could be there. And that those vehicles had to be fixed prior to the renter being allowed to have, accept any more vehicles. But that was done at his accord, that wasn't done in reference to what was decided here as far as allowing goes. And at the end of the day, anybody that's going to build there would have to get, you know, certain things approved by the city as well in reference to, but we, you know, and the client obviously has the choice of saying no as well. But I don't, that has never been discussed during anything of that nature.
And just to go to the code of, to the B three, so B three, current, its current use, its current zone does allow for B two, which is bank and office, bakeries, cafeteria, drugstore, gasoline filling station, grocery store, meat market, restaurants, tailor, professional offices.
But it's not, it's not listed as a B two, probably, is it?
It's a B three and it allows for B two.
Okay.
So that's already allowed in there.
They would prefer C one, but, I mean, I would like that written in a different way, I mean, as far as there is, but. But they, you know, they're the best, highest and best use of that property based on, we've got to get away from the residential piece of it.
I don't think that the C one kind of takes us down road and really handle the rest of your stuff or something like.
Well, I'd be choosing that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's what it says, that's what it says.
And just to remind the council, zoning is something that's set for life, right? So once you zone it, that is what it will be zoned until there is another rezone request by an applicant. And that's also if it's congruent with the uses around it, so something to keep in mind whenever there's action later.
Well, that's the thing we're gonna worry about because we all see what the money's talking in, weeks and counting right now, still a lot of things, a lot of people don't like. You know, once you give in or, like you say, we can't give out. These people that you're talking about, they probably have no interest in doing that, but somebody hits the right dollar, remember they'll sell to them and they will.
Any other questions?
Well, it doesn't just matter for like your client, who they sell to, it's the buyer, who are they going to sell to two years from now?
That's all.
Or, or, you know, down the line, I mean, it's just, just because.
We all are aware that whole town needs to be rezoned, and we're all very clear about that. I mean, it's really been a hard time, honestly, dealing with the residential pieces of things because of the, the surveys and the previous, you know, being incorrectly done. So a lot of easement issues and things of that nature. So we know that moving forward, we're going to have to rezone, and there'll have to be a whole rezoning process within the city. I mean, it's just, it's inevitable.
Yeah, and to that, the legislature's made it almost impossible to do kind of a citywide rezoning in the sense of, you now have to notice absolutely everybody. And then if you take away a use that they currently have, let's say it's a commercial and it should really be a residential, then the city would then have to pay them for what could be perceived as loss of revenue. Yeah, they went, they went pretty scorched earth this last session. And so, and it's for property rights, right? It's for the property owners, it's to protect their, their rights. But from a city's perspective of trying to rezone, just like with annexations, it's getting a little bit harder for us to work through that process because it's becoming very cumbersome in the sense of you kind of have to have everybody in the city on board of what you're wanting to rezone to. And that takes a very large planning study that you have to do. We're looking at that comprehensive plan. One thing that we could look at whenever we decide to do that is possibly looking at an overlay for original Bartlett, which is kind of where you're seeing all these issues. And they remain with the categories that we have, and then you possibly look at going to more of a form-based code. And then you look at the different, the new parts of Bartlett that are kind of starting to annex in and having different categories for them, kind of your more residential, multifamily, kind of the, the best practice that you're seeing, seeing in the planning world right now for categories, but that's something that's gonna take time.
That's right, it's for the city, that's right, yeah.
Yeah. Take time and money.
That's actually, I mean, I was in the same building, you know, kind of completing the E T J, if you will. Doesn't exist anymore for the best part.
Any other questions or comments?
Is there time to speak for, against the rezoning?
Did you have something that you signed?
Uh, no.
It's a public hearing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I would say.
There will be a public hearing right after this and that's where you can speak.
Okay, I don't think she asked, yeah.
And we still don't know what's gonna happen with ninety-five yet at this point either. Because they're getting rid of wide ninety-five all the way around, it's either talking about my fashion model or the other, with the wooden shop or whatever that. It's just that we respect the national differences as well in our decision.
Yeah, that's actually for a public, you can, I mean, I can't pull it today. The law for that actually is already decided and it's.
Oh, is it only?
Yeah.
I thought I talked to the representative.
Yeah, no, it's there, it's, there's, it's there for several long times, yeah. You may have to go down there, you know how they have the big tables with the glass and she let me out. But it's the overlay maps.
Was there anything else for the presentation? Any other questions for the presentation? If there's nothing else for the presentation, we'll move into the public hearing, which will be where the public has the right to speak on. And so if you have nothing else, Miss Cooper?
No, I'm good.
Anybody else, counsel? Okay, we'll move on to the, that was closing of the workshop, so we'll thank you for your presentation and we'll move on to the public hearings. And that's item number five. I will. We'll hold a public hearing to consider a zoning map amendment to rezone for approximately zero point three two one four acres of land from B three general business district to C one commercial district for the property generally located at two forty east Devilla Street, Bartlett, in Bell County, Texas. And we will open the public hearing at seven twenty-six P M. So this is where if anybody has anything else to say, you're more than welcome to stand up and address the, the counsel.
Hello.
You state your name and address, please.
My name is Elma Nino and the address is two two six East Devilla Street, Bartlett. So I hope that I do justice to this because I was not prepared whatsoever.
You're fine.
And Ms. Becky was very prepared. I'm here at the behest of my parents. We, like I said, lived directly next door. Ms. Becky did a really good job, let's give you guys numbers on how many people pass by every single day, somewhere between seven and eight hundred people. What I feel like I have to offer is to people specifically who live directly next door. Do you guys know Elma Nino, who she sells some miles?
Is she the one in the, in the, come in the rock house?
Yes.
Oh, okay, I know where it was.
If y'all recall, that house was really, really run down. And my parents worked their whole lives, put a lot of savings into that house. And built it up, built it from the ground up. For us, what that means is if that property next door is rezoned, is that property catches fire, which means we may not be able to afford to live there, right? Depending on what gets built there. And that is a really scary proposition for us. I understand that it brings a lot of business into town and it looks like a lot of money. But we are definitely against it as it would affect us directly, being right next to someone. Although, how about my sister, well, we used to live in Georgetown right next to Sadegois. If you've ever been to Georgetown, that little brown house, we used to live there. And so we are one hundred percent already aware of what a business next door brings. You know, privacy, people parking in your front yard without permission. It's very, it was very convenient to walk over and get some stuff, but it was not fun. And that's why I'm here today to talk a gap, or say that we, as a family, who would be directly impacted are against the rezoning of that property.
Any, anything else? Any questions for?
We can't answer the public hearings.
All righty.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Is anyone else? Becky, anything to say? Anybody else?
I don't have a horse in this race, actually, but.
Tom, can you state name and address?
I, I was looking at the maps, zoning maps on, online, and I, because I don't understand the zoning. Zoning maps don't appear to show that it's currently B three. I, I don't understand.
The colors are, when they did that comprehensive plan, I think back in two thousand two or two thousand five, the, the colors they used are not very stark. So you, and it's whenever it's printed, it's very hard to see. It is B three, but whenever we looked at, we also had to have kind of a very zoned-in look at it. And it's something that we're working to change as we move to a G I S zoning to have very different colors so that you have absolutely no question as to what it is.
We have a larger map than this that we kind of go by. We have a larger map than this that we kind of go by. It's really hard to tell on this whole eight by one. Yeah, it's really hard to tell on that one, I agree, but we do have a larger, a larger one that we use. Uh. All right, if there's nothing else, council, y'all have anything to say? Okay, we'll move on, we'll close that public hearing at 7:30 PM. Thank y'all. And we'll move right on into the, uh, regular agenda. Item number six, consideration and possible action to approve ordinance 2023-1023-01 for a zoning map amendment to rezone approximately 0.3214 acres of land from B3 general business district to C1 commercial district for the property generally located at 240 East of Villa Street, Bartlett, in Bell County, Texas. This is the action item, council, so this is where you can-
Happy to answer any questions y'all may have. Um, one thing to note, just because I've read up more on our rezon and our variance process, if, if this were to be denied by the council, the applicant cannot request a rezon for six months. So it kind of lies until then, if they wanted to come back. And if it passes, then we would just have to, um, amend our zoning map to show the news.
Yes, ma'am.
So if it doesn't pass, and you say that the applicant can't reapply, if the property then sells, can we, does that clockwork step with the new purchaser?
I'd have to check with our attorney on that one, because that, I haven't been a part of that situation. I wonder if it's tied to the property or if it's tied to the applicant. I could see it tied to property.
Possibly. We might have to know that just so that we can answer that since it is-
Yeah. The other, the other thing that, that could happen too is the applicant withdraws, and then that way, you don't necess, you don't necessarily have to wait six months, right? You've withdrawn, essentially no action's been taken by council, you can kind of see, is this really what, yeah, is this C1? Is it B3? Is it B2? Is it B1? Whatever it may be. Um, so that's the thing. And you mentioned kind of the deed restriction, that's something that could be done, um, that some have done before to kind of eliminate uses.
Yep.
But that's on the owner of the property.
Right.
So it's currently B3, which is-
B3 and B2.
So B3, it's zone B3, which allows for anything in B3 and B2, which included restaurants, service stations, stuff like that.
Repair shop, all kinds of-
Yes. So just, so the resident is aware, it's currently zoned B3, which means that they could be more than a residence. If somebody, if, if, if they sell it and someone buys it, if the, if the variance were to get denied for a C1, they could still have a restaurant or, or a, a, many different businesses there, uh, according to the, to the current zoning ordinance that it's already in. And so, it's just that the C, the C1 allows quite a bit more of, of stuff, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if the council could, if you decide to keep it at where it's at, if the council could kind of stay maybe in like what you said, um, in reference to like maybe what we can or we cannot do, either way, um, that way we-
As far as, as far as the current use, or do you mean restricted use?
Restrictive. So what we're asking is instead of denying it, if that happens to be what the vote is, instead of just outright denying it, potentially considering an approval with exceptions, so those exceptions can then be put in the deed upon sale, so that it can then have greater usage, but still limited to the things that you don't want.
Right.
Just trying to think outside the box.
Yeah.
Because at the end of the day, this isn't really so much for the, you know-
Yeah.
We're, we get, you know-
And I think-
We're pretty much taking care of everything on the front end, so then the back end does, you know, the person who has the-
Yeah, goes smooth.
Deal with it. So we can do it that way as well, if that makes everybody much more comfortable.
I think-
But yes, like Chad said, it will still allow for things that I don't think that they-
Yeah, and I, I think the intention y'all have is to include the B1 and the B2 and the B3, not necessarily maybe C1, because it's more industrial. Because it, you, the, the uses you were referencing earlier, it seemed like you were kind of leaning more towards B1, but then B1's very restrictive to just B1.
Right. I would agree with that.
I think if the, it's up to the council on what they decide to do here, but i, i, into the situation that y'all referenced, the possibility of an exception, and, and approval with exceptions, I think that's something that we'd have to check with our attorney on to just see-
Correct.
-the wording on that, because an approval with exceptions may stand here, but who's to say that it actually moves down to the actual bill of sale and the, the deed restrictions? And, you know, that's not something that the council then has control over, so if that property were to come in and it wasn't on that paperwork, and now it's zoned to essentially whatever it's zoned to. It's just very-
It falls to each, he's saying it might not go down the theme, but it will, because it will-
That's why I asked for deed restriction.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, the council would not be able to have any control over the deed, right? So that's where the, we'd have to kind of check with our attorney. And then-
Gotcha.
From a zoning perspective, it just gets, I don't even know what we would put down on the map, if it's technically C1 but not C1. So that's, there's just a litany of questions that we would have for our attorney.
It makes for B3.
Yeah.
We're just trying to often-
A B3 plus B1, essentially.
We're also trying to make things that can be done now to not create, create less work in the future for everybody involved, right? We have kind of the point, this is not this whole, you know, reinventing the wheel stuff. So what can we do for future, so we're not constantly doing that and creating more work, us creating work for you, and then obviously for the developers or whoever that may be purchasing, so that's kind of why we're trying to think different ways to make this work for all of the world. Because it's going, it is what it is.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I mean, it is what it is.
We get calls every week.
Yeah, I mean-
It's, it's a, it's a good call to have, absolutely.
It is a, a good call, and, you know, sales taxes definitely needed in this town, for sure, so.
So council, uh, you can make, you can, you can, you can make a motion to accept, a motion to deny, a motion to table, get some more answers, clarification, research, your choice, and-
That sounds like we need to check with the attorney and see what we can do on the exceptions, or maybe accommodate, but still have some limitations of it.
Our attorney's under the weather of night, or we could go in executive session and call him, but he's-
Well, we wouldn't be able to since it's not listed under the executive session, as an item.
You can, yeah, we, we have the right to-
Oh, okay.
-consult with city attorney on any agenda items we can, we can go in executive session. But he's, he's got, he's got COVID, and so he's like, I talked to him about two hours ago and he sounds terrible.
He's a little bit of a doctor.
So, yeah, I, I woke him up about two hours ago and, yeah, he doesn't sound good, so I told him I would have to ask the council to table anything.
So run this by me again. The C1 where-
No, B2.
B3.
So B3 right now allows everything that's listed in a B3 and a B2, which is a, a lot of the things that she mentioned, like gas station, car repair shop, uh, restaurants, uh, bakeries, blah, 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 all that. A C1 is, it's all this other stuff here.
Plus B1.
Plus B1, plus C1, or plus B1, plus B2, plus, it's like basically-
But what were y'all talking about?
Anything's allowed.
Or something, I, I missed that.
Oh.
With exception, you know?
So they, they asked if there could be an, an except, an, uh, approval with exceptions to the uses, so it'd be kind of like an SUP is what they call it, but we don't necessarily, I don't think, have the ability for that in our code right now. Um, so it would be checking with the attorney as to what the path forward looks like there in the sense of, could you approve C1 and then remove C1 uses to just essentially keep B1, B2, B3?
I don't know if we have enough information to-
I still don't understand why you would do all that extra work. If, if you're gonna exempt everything that's listed in a C1, why would you change it to C1? I mean, it's like, am I missing something too? I mean, I mean, it, it, am I missing something? I mean, if that's what you're asking, I mean-
So we would take this stuff out of C1.
The, well, only if it's legally allowed.
I, I got you.
But call it a C1, but only allow B1, 2, 3.
I can answer that. All right, go ahead. So, so from the perspective of, so this is my roadrunner on, from the, from the perspective of a sales, uh, it makes it more appealing to say it has a commercial zone. And so even the, so when, so even if there are some restrictions, it makes it more appealing, it does open up the audience more.
So would a B3 be in the commercial zone?
Well, that's considered a retail.
It's business.
It's general business.
It's a general business district.
So if we're to advertise it out to the, to the public, as it were, if we're able to say it has commercial zoning, that is much more appealing than to be able to say it has limited retail zoning.
But when the buy-
And that's what the client was asking.
But when the buyer comes to the city and says, hey, it's commercial zone-
But we get the buyer to the city, so I can do it.
But when they come to the city and say, it's commercial zone, why can't I build this there? I mean, because those were taken out during an exception.
Well, no, they accepted.
I get what you're saying, when we bought our little spot at our restaurant, it's kind of out of town, because that commercial plot is really, right? It wasn't just a resident for a residential, it was commercial, yeah. I, I see what you're saying.
But I wasn't that busy.
But I don't like the stuff that's in the commercial district for that area.
You can create a new zone.
Yeah, you can create a new zone.
I said, I'm-
Can it be tabled?
It can be tabled.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to be tabled, Mr. Gill, can we get more information on it, what we can and can't do? With the more evidence pieces. Yeah. Make them have, still have, we need the pieces.
Mr. Weaver's, uh, made a motion to table this until, uh, we can get further, uh, advice from, from our city attorney.
I'll see.
And Mr. Gilmore has seconded that. All in favor of the tabling? We'll table this until further discussion. Item number seven, consideration and possible action to nominate a board member to the tax appraisal district of Bell County. This is something that they send us every year, guys, and, uh, just asked Meyer to put it into the packet. Um, so in Bell County, on January 1st, the, the, it's a two-year term, they take place on Janu, they start on January 1st, or even numbered years. Uh, Bell County, the City of Colleen and Colleen ISD, the City of Temple and Temple ISD, appoint one member each to the board of directors, the City of Belton and Belton ISD jointly appoint one member, and all other taxing units jointly appoint the seventh member. So, all I just need to know is, is anybody interested in being on the Bell County Appraisal District Board? If not, we just, there's no action, and we don't send them anything, but if somebody wants to, we need to let them know pretty soon. We need to, we just need to let them know by November 13th. Anyone? Nope, no action?
No, shouldn't.
All right, item number eight, consideration and possible action to authorize city administrator, that's her, to issue a request for qualifications for general engineering services.
So this item is, um, right now we have currently one city engineer. As you know, the city's working on several projects, and as we have identified, it would be probably best if we had several engineers under a master service agreement so that we could task order projects out to them. Um, it's one way to be more efficient, that way you have several kind of engineers working through different projects. As you know, we might have a road bond project that is gonna require a lot of time. Right now, we've got MRB working on probably four or five active projects. Um, and so for us as a city, I think that's kind of the next step, is just getting a few more professional services lined up, and that way, as we're looking to do some of these projects, we can just task order and not necessarily have to go through the entire procurement process, because we've already done it in advance and have those agreements in place.
Is it by invitation or do they have to be posted?
They're publicly. Um, yes, they'll be publicly posted, and then we have sent already to a few with the note that this is something that's up for council action and up to the council's approval, but to something for them to watch out for. And we've heard quite a bit of interest from other firms who are looking to possibly submit.
So submitting will be into, we'll put a notice in the newspaper, I suppose?
Yes.
And, and we'll send out a mass email to-
So what we would do is post it on our website, uh, I would personally share it on LinkedIn, that's probably the best way to get it kind of out to all the engineering firms, and then, um, if needed, we could also do it in the newspaper, but not necessarily, I believe, required, but I'll double check on that.
I'll make a motion to authorize city administrator to request qualifications for general engineering services.
Mr. Weaver has a motion on the table, Ms. Cooper seconded. All in favor? Carries four to zero. You voting twice over there? Item number nine, consideration and possible action to approve resolution authorizing indebtedness and security to Cadence Bank.
So this is a item that's being requested by Cadence Bank to clean up something on their end that they need from the city, uh, so that's why it's on here. They kind of sent the slate to us last week, asking if we could get it to them pretty soon. It's just something that they need to, I think, is it deeds titles, something?
From what I'm understanding, they have the wrong date on a, on a, a, a loan.
A loan.
Uh, previous, way back when, they had a long, uh, uh, the wrong closeout date on a loan, and they just need this record to correct it.
But just a resolution, man.
Mm-hmm.
If it's in our favor.
Yes. I think anything that corrects whatever is in our favor.
I don't know if it's gonna put any more money in our account, but-
Probably.
But this is one that looks like everybody's got a sign, so-
Oh, everybody does?
That's what it looks like, so we'll, if it's approved.
I'll make a motion that we approve the dissolution, authorizing indebtedness and security to Cadence Bank.
I'll see. Ms. Cooper made a motion with a Sheldon second. All in favor? Carries four to zero. So before y'all disappear tonight, we'll fill this out silently, okay? And then number 10, consideration and possible action to appoint official newspaper for the city to use for fiscal year 2024. So this is required by law for us to do every year annually, uh, by Texas, uh, government code, and this is just us doing our diligence, so.
I'd like to make a motion.
It has to be a, a, a paper that's in publication, that's in publication in your city.
In, in our city.
Well-
That has distribution in our city.
Distribution.
I'd like my promotion to make the official newspaper for the city of Bartlett for the year 2024, Temple Daily Telegram.
Okay.
Temple. Uh, we have a Ms. Cooper motion to make Temple Daily Crip Telegram as our fiscal year 2024 official newspaper, and with a Jesse, we're gonna second. All in favor? Carries four to zero. So we will go into executive session at this time. In accordance with the Texas government code, section 551.001, the city council will recess into executive session, closed meeting to discuss the following. Item number 11, deliberate appointment, employment, evaluation, compensation, reassignment duties- of this one and or dismissal of a public employee or officer regarding chief of police. So we will go into executive session at seven to P P M.
You want me in there?
Start in there if you want. Start in there if you want.
Yeah.
Do you want to even work on filling this out and where we all need to sign? Where we get four of them out of the way tonight?
Are we all back? We're rolling. All right, we'll call the meeting back into open session at 8:48 PM. Take action if any on matters discussed in executive section.
Or you can say no action.
No action. Sure, why not? Mr. Weaver has made a motion for no action. I don't think it does, but just cover it.
Okay, I want to be super safe.
Thanks, Hilton. All in favor of no action? Any future agenda items?
I heard personnel policy. So we can work on doing a workshop, a long one, maybe a special meeting where we kind of just go chapter by chapter. See what y'all want to see change. And I believe for that, whenever it does come for action, requires a super majority vote.
Do we want to make like the mid-month meeting next year or a workshop instead of actual meeting? Or do we need to have a council meeting?
Well, let's see what comes up.
Yeah, instead of having two council meetings in November, have that second meeting.
I prefer the second one of the month be the workshop coordinator. Okay, I probably said the mid-month from the first one. The first one's got all the department reports. Oh, sorry, Vicki, my bad.
Oh, now we're making threats. Go Rangers. All right, so personnel policy workshop, continued talks on the...
Yep, bring that.
Sure, why not? Mr. Weaver has made a motion for no action. I don't think it does, but just cover it.
Yeah, I want to be super safe.
I'll save me.
Thanks, Hilton. All in favor of no action? Any future agenda items?
I heard personnel policy. So we can work on doing a workshop, a long one, maybe a special meeting where we kind of just go chapter by chapter. See what y'all want to see change. And I believe for that, whenever it does come for action, requires a super majority vote.
Do we want to make like the mid-month meeting extra or a workshop instead of an actual meeting or do we need to have a council meeting?
Well, I'd love to see what comes up.
Yeah, instead of having two council meetings in November, have that second meeting.
I prefer the second one of the month be the workshop. Ordinance here. Okay, I thought you said the mid-month from the first one. The first one's got all the department reports. Oh, sorry, Vicki, my bad. Now we're making threats. Go Rangers. Alright, so personnel policy workshop, continue talks on the...
Yep, bring that. Get the attorney's opinion.
On chief contract.
I also heard demand metering. Is that something that y'all want to see us work on to bring back? I know that that was something that prior council kind of... Demand metering. Is that what it was, demand meters?
What do we need to do?
You didn't even do that, like your rec study.
Yeah.
And we wanted to shout out the rec study, correct?
Yes, sir.
Well, we haven't decided on who yet. It's still open for bids, yes.
I'm going to tell you what you need to do.
And then the item number six, the consideration of the possible action for the...
Rezone requests?
Rezone request. Anything else? Alright. Ms. Cooper has made a motion to adjourn. With what Philip Weaver said. Gail has been really quiet tonight. We'll call this meeting at 8:51 PM. It's the longest meeting ever.
Three months.